This October 10, 2013, Regular Meeting Number Five of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the pleasurable reasons, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Kingsclan Elementary School Sixth Grade Chorus under the direction of Ashton Straywick and Michaela McKinstry.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Thank you, thank you so much. There was a Kingsclan Elementary School Sixth Grade Chorus.
Brad Oktisrick.
Mrs. McLachlan, you want to say something?
I just want to tell the Chorale Director and the students, you did a fabulous job. Thank you for representing Kingsclan so beautifully, and I hope you guys have a fantastic school year.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, I know that we all want to thank the parents for being here tonight and for your support of our schools. Very impressive. So congratulations to our parents.
And you are always welcome to come back.
And you're now, excuse me, take your children home.
A few announcements before we continue tonight's meeting. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's regular meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and relating meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. If you have signed up to speak before the board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the Deputy Clerk sitting in the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off your cell phone. And at this time, it is my great pleasure on behalf of the School Board to introduce John Foster, if you can come to the podium, stand there, we're not going to bite you, who will serve as the new Division Counsel for the Fairfax County Public Schools effective December 1. Although the board officially approved Mr. Foster's appointment at our last School Board meeting, we invite him to attend tonight's meeting so he could have an opportunity to say a few words. So, Mr. Foster.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's George Johnson, Dr. Garza. I'm honored by this appointment. I very much look forward to starting work with you on December 1. And I know I have big shoes to fill with Ann Murphy taking a much-deserved retirement. I look forward to continuing the reputation for excellence that I know she has in the legal community as well as in the educational community. I am a product of public school education, K all the way through 12, and I still remember some of the teachers that I had. And so I view my mission and the mission of the Division Counsel's office as helping you all, as well as Dr. Garza, satisfy your mission, which is an educational mission. And I will do everything within my power to see that on the legal end, we get that job done. And so I look forward to working with all of you, and I know we'll be spending a lot of time together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, we want to welcome Mr. Foster to our team. We're just delighted to have him join us. He went through a very intensive process. We wore him out, we had quite a number of candidates for the position, we involved lots of people, principals, you know, our general council office interacts and supports our schools very often, our principals, and all aspects of our organization. So we had a lot of wonderful input, and John rose to the top, and we're very, very delighted. He comes to us with over 21 years as a practicing attorney, nine years with the county, which he has strong established relationships with the county, we think that's great, I think five years in Falls Church, working with the schools and the city there. So it comes with a wealth of experience, and so we're delighted to have him. We know that he'll add to already a very strong team that we have, and I know he's looking forward to working with them. And he also has a ninth-grade son at Fairfax High School, and we think that's great as well. So, John, we're very, very happy to have you join us, I believe, starting very early in December, and we look forward to having you as part of our team.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Garza. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Before I ask Mr. Will Ash to read couple of recognitions, let me call upon Mr. Schurz, if you're ready, to read National Dyslexia Awareness Month recognition.
Yes, I was very pleased last evening to be with my ACSD committee. And I made a point of sharing with one of the committee members that of all of the things that somebody comes up to me in a grocery store, or at a football field, or at a soccer field, or after a board meeting, and makes a passing comment to me, I was surprised that it's dyslexia and my advocacy for improved awareness, and it's probably because I live with it in my family. I have children who have been diagnosed, and a spouse, and other family members, so I see the very real impact. So I have two things to read. One is the awareness statement. October is National Dyslexia Awareness Month. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that results in people having difficulties learning to read, spell, write, and pronounce words. Dyslexia is not due to either a lack of intelligence or a desire to learn. In an effort to bring awareness to this learning disability, the Office of Special Education Instruction will be hosting a series of events in support of Dyslexia Awareness Month. On Friday, October 25th, a parent workshop on strategies to support students with dyslexia is scheduled at the Parent Resource Center in the Dumb Learning Administrative Center, where parents can learn about accommodations for children with dyslexia, tech tools which provide support, and the resources that are available. Please check our FCPS website for more information. And in addition, I want to particularly acknowledge the teachers who have dyslexic students and go the extra mile to notice maybe when a student is struggling. If they're very good in oral presentation in class and are very reticent to write, that may be the clue. But I found a teacher's blog that is particularly wonderful. It's called Larissa Grace WordPress.com, and she solicited some poems by students who have dyslexia. And she said it was very difficult for her not to impress her ideas upon them, but that she was thrilled with how they came out, and there was one that particularly struck me. "I have something called dyslexia, so I find it hard to read and write. It doesn't mean I am not clever, it means that I am clever. There are so many things about dyslexia, my problem is I can't get things on paper. But that's all right, it just means I need help. Most teachers think that they should not have us in their class, but when they hear something about us, they take it all back. One thing about spelling is that we may write a D for B the wrong way around, or spell them wrong, R-O-N-G. But if you don't tell them, they won't know you have it. But we don't know if that's good or bad. But there is one thing I would like to know: why give it a name so hard that nobody can spell it? So I think that we should call it clever."
Thank you, Mrs. Schurz. Let me call on Mr. Ash for announcements.
Using the theme "School Lunch Across the USA," the 2013 National School Lunch Week will include events and activities that promote the benefits of healthy school lunches while celebrating the flavors, ingredients, and culture of various regions of the USA. The 2013 event will also spotlight the healthy foods and positive changes that FCPS has incorporated into its menus. The National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There is a continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hopes of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. Teen Read Week encourages teens to go beyond the traditional book and explore poetry, audiobooks, books about music, and more at their school and local library. The 2013 is Seek the Unknown at Your Library, and encourages teens to explore and learn about the unknown through mystery, adventure, science fiction, and fantasy books. Teen Read Week has been observed since 1998 in an effort to engage teens in reading for pleasure and fun, and to learn about the free resources that are available at the library. Research shows that teens who read for fun have better test scores and are more likely to succeed in the workforce. The School Board encourages all FCPS teenage students to take the advantage of the resources in their school and public library and to become lifelong readers and learners.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next, we have a recognition of National School Bus Safety Week, and Mrs. Sines.
Thank you. With the second-largest bus fleet in the country behind, is it Trailways? Is that the only? Greyhound, sorry, we are only behind Greyhound in the number of buses. We definitely celebrate School Bus Safety Week in a big way here in Fairfax County. It's obviously one of our top jobs, is the safety of our students in buses, and everyone has to be aware, motorists and students alike. So it's appropriate for us to focus on school bus safety this week, and every week, of course. So, the week of October 21st through 25th, so it's actually not this week, it's next week, has been designated, two weeks from now, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme "Stand Back From the Yellow and Black," the week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student riders. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our wonderful school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 110,000 students in over 1,500 school buses, traveling nearly 17 million operational miles each year. So I'd like, do we have any bus drivers and attendants in the office, I'm sorry, in the audience? If we do, could you come on down front for a picture? Do we get?
Mrs. Sines, they all start from 5:00 in the morning, so we ask them to stay home.
Oh, okay, good. I was asked to ask, but that makes a lot of sense, actually. They have to get up very early in the morning, I completely understand. Because of their long hours and very early morning runs, the school bus drivers and attendants are not here, we thank them very much for their hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Sines. Next, we have Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. On September 26th, staff presented a plan to the board to meet Virginia Department of Education standards which require each school board to adopt biannually a Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The September 2013 Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan includes pertinent data from FY2030's Student Achievement Goal Monitoring Reports, which highlights academics, essential life skills, and responsibility to the community. Additional information is included about enrollment projections, technology, parent involvement, and cooperation with neighboring school divisions. Board approval of the plan is scheduled for October 24. I don't believe we have any speakers signed up. Speakers list for this public hearing opened on September 20th and closed yesterday at 4:30, and those speakers signed up to address the board. Therefore, the public hearing is now adjourned. The next order of business is presentations to the School Board, with the first one being Spotlight on Learning. Dr. Garza.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm delighted tonight to introduce to you a wonderful science program, elementary science program. And we have Marian Settlemeyer, who is a fourth-grade AAP teacher at Centerville Elementary School. She's joined by her principal, Dwayne Young. I know that she's also been supported by Dr. Carol Horn, who's also in the audience tonight. But we're very, very excited to learn about the Jason Science Resilient Planet Unit, and we are anxious to learn about it, and I would turn it over to you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share something that has been revolutionary for teachers in science. The Jason curriculum has been paired with the Fairfax County Public Schools POS to put real science in the hands of children. Jason, the Jason Project, was created by Dr. Bob Ballard. If you're not familiar with him, he's the one who found the Titanic after it sank. And he grew up wanting real science in his life, and he felt children should have real science. So what he has established with a group of wonderful educators is curriculum that's not just hands-on, but that's real science. And it's real science that's going on in the field of science today. The students actually get to connect with experts in the field, they have some short little videos, and you know, that doesn't sound like much, but I want you to know that I'm not sure if you're familiar with who Tim Samaris is. He was one of the top tornado scientists in the nation, and he was one of the instructors for Jason Project in science. He was killed last spring chasing tornadoes with his son. And my students mourned his loss. They wanted me to have a memorial for him because they connected so strongly with this expert. So these little video clips let me do something I can't do on a regular basis, which is have an expert for everything I teach come in and work with the kids. Jason brings those scientists into my classroom. It also gives the students opportunities to do things that they think are games. But for example, they actually have to study the eight most famous hurricanes in the U.S.'s history. They then become service, public service announcers, they have to determine its path, they have to make a public service announcement, they have to make decisions as to where it's going to hit land, which cities are impacted, and whether to evacuate or not. My students generally end up in the top 10 spots in the nation because they love it so much, it's real. And it's just allowed me to bring science to life for them, and what's great is it upholds all the standards of Fairfax County. We put our students through a rigorous task in learning here, and Jason supports it wholeheartedly. You'll see problem-based learning, you'll see STEM education, 21st-century skills, it's all, and the parallel curriculum going from novice to expert, all rolled into this one set of curriculum. I did bring with me tonight, in case you wanted to see how it's integrated with Fairfax County, I'll just leave them here. This is how they've paired our curriculum with the Jason curriculum, just so you can see how it supports. There are multi-units. Resilient Planet is the one I'm currently doing with my class right now, and so you get a sneak peek into my classroom. So if you'd like to just watch for just a second, they'll be happy to show you what a typical day in science is at my school.
What does a scientist look like? Scary? Inquisitive? Formula-driven? At Centerville Elementary, this is the look of young scientists. They're encouraged to take risks in their learning, guided by their teacher and a science-enrichment program known as the Jason Learning Curriculum.
An oceanographer, and he studies animals and their adaptations in the field. And so we have an opportunity to listen to his take on this.
But when Enrique started doing his own dives, he noticed there wasn't as much sea life as there was in Cousteau's films.
Available to all students in Fairfax County Public Schools, Jason Learning provides a digital connection with real experts in the field.
And he's going to travel across, and you're actually going to time that. I'm going to give you guys a stopwatch, so you can time that. Your goal is to figure out what adaptations he has to make or she has to make to be the fastest shark in our pond. The Jason curriculum allows them to go from a novice stage to an expert stage through experimentation. And I don't want to use hands-on, because that's not what we're talking about here, we're talking about real-life science. We're talking about actually doing experiments and working through things the way scientists in the field are today.
I think you should, like, at the flat, have something like pushing.
Their goal was to create a shark that could move quickly through the water. And what they had was they had clay, they had a stream table, they had a paperclip, they had fishing weights and fishing line, and stopwatches. And their goal was to make a design of a shark the way they felt it should be. Try it one more time. To test it repeatedly, to make sure that they weren't getting a false reading, they looked at the weight of the fish, they looked at the size, the aerodynamics of it. I didn't instruct them in that. They brought that in on their own. I said, it has to be two and a half inches long at least.
Two and a half inches. This is one big shark.
They went from a blob shark to a shark that was hollow down the center because it would allow the water to flow more quickly. They experienced the learning, they experienced the testing. It wasn't, let's read and let's, you know, give it back.
By integrating digital media into their lesson plans, teachers have another tool to motivate students to study and possibly pursue a career in science, technology, engineering, and math.
I will say that Jason also is a huge time saver because of the integration factor. In this lesson today, I was able to do metric system, I was able to do customary measurement, they were for weight and distance. We talked about adaptations in science, we did experimental design, they were writing and recording like a scientist. I mean, in an hour, I accomplished more than I would have by ever teaching them separate.
It was like an air pocket, so it could float.
I asked my students, but they wanted everybody to know. They wanted everybody to know that science should be just like this. The science should be fun, it should be meaningful. I've seen some successes and I've seen some failures. If you were successful. For me, I want them to walk out seeing that they are scientists, and that they do make a difference each and every day, and that they can contribute to the world. Because for some of them, that's not in their norm. They don't feel like they contribute. But in here, you're a scientist, and you're contributing to the growth of our minds.
Today's students, tomorrow's scientists.
What's really exciting about this curriculum is it's not just Resilient Planet, which is paired with the ecosystem for fourth grade. It's Monster Storms, it's Tectonic Fury, it's Infinite Potential. First of all, the names, if they don't get you, you know, I mean, kids hear Monster Storms, and they're in. I have already won that battle. I mean, who doesn't want to learn about a tornado or hail, you know, hailstorms that can produce golf ball and baseball-sized products? They love it. But for them, it's real. And for many of them, the only science they know is what comes in a kid or what they read about. What's really nice is the way Jason is organized for teachers is you can look up standards by state, and you can go in and look at Virginia SOL standards or Fairfax County POS standards, and it tells you exactly which lessons are aligned by standard that work for your class. So for kindergarten classes, it may just be some of the animated pictures. For high school students, there's actually field assignments, where you go out and you actually do a whole problem-based learning unit to figure out how to solve problems that our country's currently facing. My students last year were solving the problem of how do we coexist with the ever-growing population in Virginia, with our ecosystem, without damaging it any further? All right, they actually came up with some amazing solutions. They were creative, they were based on science, and what we found out after they were done is many of them are something currently being developed in the field today. If you're familiar with the Tesla, the car of the Tesla? My students had, no, you have one? Awesome. My students had actually had no idea what that car was, and they designed a car very similar to that. They also have learned that science isn't based just in data. The first thing I show them is a very short excerpt from the Jetsons. I don't know if you're familiar with the Jetsons, but they're some of the greatest predictors of all times in the world of science. When I was a little girl, never heard of Skype, they were talking on the TV phone, never heard of a 3D printer, and boom, they typed in their little thing, and they got their dinner out of a box on the wall.
Some of the young people in the room have no idea what we're talking about.
That's why I show them. But I also want to make sure that you understand, this is not just Advanced Academics curriculum. What you saw in that classroom was a mix with one of my co-teachers. She currently is teaching fourth grade, General Ed, ESOL, LD, and when you walk in our science room, there is no difference. I have students who are put in a non-categorical classroom, if you know what non-cat is, who are doing presentations about Jason Science. It becomes the equalizer, and I can't thank our Advanced Academics Department enough. They buy the site license for the entire county. I mean, it's expensive, but it's amazing, and it gives all children the opportunity. I'm also very lucky because I have the total support of my principal, Dwayne Young, who gives me space and time. I actually have trained myself 300, done 11 sessions, about 30 teachers per session, in using Jason Science, and I'm excited because I get emails saying, okay, I did this, it didn't work, what do I need to do? And I get to help them through their journey. And when teachers like school, kids like school, and that's where the real learning starts.
Well, Ms. Settlemeyer, first of all, I want to congratulate you. We all talk about how important it is to have rigorous and engaging science at the elementary level. That's where we create scientists, right? And students love for science. But it starts with a great teacher like you, a teacher that's passionate about science. I think it's very obvious to all of us. So congratulations to you, and thank you for sharing this wonderful, I can't wait to visit your classroom.
Please come. Anybody's welcome, you might get put to work. I mean, anyone will tell you if you come to my classroom, former parents, anybody, you get put to work. Dwayne gets put to work. But you'd be more than welcome to come and visit us. I think you'd really be excited to see what nine-year-olds can do.
Thank you both so much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Young, and thank you, Dr. Horn.
Thank you.
Any board member had any comment? Right? Okay, Mrs. McLachlan. You might need to come back to the podium.
Yeah, we usually have you come back, and we'll just ask you a couple of questions. Oh, no, that's okay. While you're coming, while you're coming back down, I'll tell you, I apologize to my colleagues in the audience for getting a little excited about the Tesla. It was literally just this Monday that I was driving down to Richmond, and it was for a joint task force on digital learning, and five of us from Fairfax County got into this Tesla to carpool and save and go green. It was the nicest luxury car I have ever driven in my lifetime. It was smooth, apparently it's all because there's no engine in there, but if you can ever own a Tesla in your lifetime, I'm looking forward to the next car. And apparently the prices have come down, but phenomenal experience, absolutely amazing. I just wanted to, first of all, offer my compliments, as Dr. Garza shared with you. I mean, the video made me want to run in and go be in your class tomorrow morning, and I was a history major in college, so for you to get me excited about science just speaks volumes to what you're already doing. I also wanted to give my appreciation to Principal Young. I believe we met at the Nova Outside Green School. I believe we met at the Nova Outside Green Schools Expo this past spring. I went with my son as a parent at the middle school. Frost Middle School was there. And your school and the work you're doing at Centerville Elementary is just fantastic. And I keep crossing paths with Centerville Elementary because in August, I was coming out of Robinson where they were doing a new introduction for elementary school teachers on the science curriculum. And I met Gabrielle Talarico. And she's one of your first-grade teachers. And what turned into a little quick hello, how come you're here at Robinson, was about a 20-minute conversation. We talked about elementary science. She emailed me and I'm making an appointment to come visit your school, even though it's not in my district, just because the things you're doing, the teachers you have in your building, it's making a 46-year-old like myself very excited about science. And I'm hoping to be able to share that excitement with my own schools in Braddock District. But I truly just wanted to compliment you, Principal Young, and to you, this amazing 4th grade teacher. Thank you for helping make science so interesting for our students. And I really hope that we, as a board, can help Dr. Garza and this school system to continue doing great work like the Jason Project so that we will see Fairfax County shine in our science achievement here in the county. So, thank you for your indulgences.
Mr. Short?
And I think you too, actually. I was hoping that we could expand our Jason Project participation. I had brought that up last summer. My husband works for the Patel Memorial Institute, and most people have never even heard of Patel. But, you know, we don't have Xerox or golf balls or compact disks or the barcode without Patel. And getting that science interest in... Patel funded a science and innovation fair that we used to have here in Fairfax County in one of our schools for several years. And seeing that interest in young kids, because science sounds like it could be boring until you experience it, and that experiential hands-on learning where you have and cross over all of the curriculum is essential in garnering their interest. And with the STEM technology jobs that are going to be out there, we need the kids to get interested even earlier and stir that interest. So I look forward to other schools capitalizing on that and thus expanding other ways and even looking into industry about how we can further innovate science in the classroom.
Well, and just to let you know, currently, Jason is being implemented in 108 schools in Fairfax County with a minimum of one teacher per school. Some, there's more, but it's a minimum of one per school. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sorry I left...
Mr. Ash has one last question.
I'm sorry.
This is less of a question, more of a comment. I want to thank you for being such an inspiring science teacher. It's... I remember in elementary school, the one thing that could always get me excited was hands-on science. In 3rd grade, it was even just mixing basic powders like sugar and salt and water and vinegar and seeing what would happen. In 4th grade, it was blowing up light bulbs by attaching them to way too many batteries.
Just so you know, they still try to do that. The bigger the battery, the better.
In 5th grade, it was a project that researched... I wrote a four-page paper about hurricanes and then prepared a presentation about that. And it was always those assignments that got me really excited. And I'm now taking classes in electronics and neuroscience, and it's, I still feel that. I still, I still go back to that elementary school love. And it was, it's teachers like you that really, that really make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be back next month to get, in two weeks, to get another, you know? Felt really good. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
I have one last question. I think Mrs. McLachlan talked about, you know, 46-year-olds group of the member getting excited. You think 56 and 66-year-olds group of the members could get also excited?
Absolutely, come on in.
Okay, let's go then, Mrs. Strauss.
You need to come. You'll have so much fun. You're welcome anytime. I'll be at next week. I'm the oldest one. Oh, you only can come if you arrive in a Tesla. I want to go for a ride, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speaker's list by signing up online at www.fcpss.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson. And while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principals or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write to the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, four citizens have signed up to address the board. Dana Weinberg, Cameron Hoffman, Laura Kent, and Joanne Moore Rezek. Could I have Dana Weinberg?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dana Weinberg, and the reason I'm here is to present more factual errors in the 2012 online version of the textbook World History Patterns of Interaction published by McDougal-Latell. We've only presented problems to date found in the first few paragraphs of this unit, Conflicts in the Middle East. There are problems throughout the rest of the chapter. If the patterns of serious problems continues in each paragraph throughout the unit and based on our preliminary review they do, we may eventually formally request the school board to remove the materials from the school system. On page 1017, under the heading Main Idea, the textbook states division of the Palestine Mandate after World War II made the Middle East a hotbed of competing national movements. The Palestine Mandate, or the Mandate for Palestine, a legally binding document, was conferred on April 24, 1920, at the San Remo Conference and its terms outlined in the Treaty of Sevres on August 10, 1920, and it laid down the Jewish legal right to settle anywhere in Palestine. And there's a map. The British Mandate was entrusted by the League of Nations with the responsibility to administrate the area delineated by the Mandate for Palestine. The Main Idea infers a legal document was divided. The geographical area Palestine was divided. The Mandate for Palestine's legal terms brought forth the division of Palestine. The use of the Main Idea sentence is incorrect. On July 24, 1922, Britain cut away 77% of Palestine and awarded it to Abdullah bin Hussein for his loyalty to the British against the Ottoman Turks, creating the new country Transjordan, which is now as Jordan, and formerly Arab Palestine, and 23% as the new county, excuse me, country, Israel, formerly Jewish Palestine. Under Israel becomes a state, the textbook states the former Palestine mandate now consists of Israel, the West Bank, and the Gaza Strip. This is factually incorrect on two levels. According to international law, the West Bank and Gaza Strip are still part of Israel today. Israel, the West Bank, and the Gaza Strip were the former Jewish mandate. The term competing nationalist movements does not accurately represent the two peoples' intentions. Theor Havel founded the modern political movement of Zionism with the goal of establishing a Jewish national home in Palestine. The Arabs' goal was to kill the Jews and drive them from Palestine. Haj Amin Hosani, a virulent anti-Semite, first began to organize small groups of suicide groups to terrorize Jews in 1919, well before the end of World War II. He incited the First, Second, and Third Intifada. That violence continues today.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Cameron Hoffman, to be followed by Laura Kent and Joanne Moore Rezek.
Hi, my name is Cameron Hoffman. I'm a member of Decoding Dyslexia Virginia. Decoding Dyslexia is a grassroots movement founded by parents of children with dyslexia who came together based on their common struggle to get appropriate services for their children. The first Decoding Dyslexia state organization was formed in New Jersey two years ago. Decoding Dyslexia in New Jersey made it very easy to replicate, and to date, there have been 38 other states that have formed chapters. I hope you take from that that the number of states involved indicates that concern for dyslexia remediation is not only a concern here in Fairfax, but across the country as a whole. Since forming nine months ago, Decoding Dyslexia Virginia has over 600 members. Our mission is simple. We aim to raise dyslexia awareness. We want to empower families to support their children, inform policymakers on the best practice to identify, remediate, and support students with dyslexia. We want to link parents to dyslexic-specific resources. Sorry. We would like a dyslexic-specific screen for K through 3. We want early identification and remediation with structured, systematic, and sequential, simultaneously multi-sensory reading programs. And this is based on over 40 years of dyslexia research. We want improved access to assistive technology for our students, and we would like training for school professionals to include teachers, principals, educational psychologists, social workers, and paraprofessionals. This is a complex issue. It requires a complex solution. We've met with teachers, parents, advocates, tutors, school board members, school officials, state delegates, state senators, and congressmen. We look forward to continuing to work with Superintendent Garza, Dr. Dockry, Dr. Meyer, and the school board to improve the education of dyslexia here in the county. And we hope Fairfax can be an exemplary model for dyslexia education for the rest of the state. Appreciate your comments on dyslexia.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laura Kent, to be followed by Joanne Moore Rezek.
Good evening. Thank you for acknowledging dyslexia in your announcements. My name is Laura Kent, and I'm a member of the grassroots movement Decoding Dyslexia Virginia. As October is Dyslexia Awareness Month in the state of Virginia, we would like to take our allotted time to highlight some important information. Virginia does have a universal definition of dyslexia in the state education code. Dyslexia affects 1 in 5 or 20% of the population. 80% of children who struggle with a learning disability are dyslexic. Approximately 80% of the current prison population is functionally illiterate. If diagnosed or remediated early, many dyslexic children can transition out of special education or possibly never enter special education in the very first place. The National Reading Panel Report of 2002 states that 75% of children not on grade level by the end of 3rd grade or age 9 are at a high risk for never achieving a high school level of reading. In contrast, 95% of children reading at grade level by the end of 1st grade stay on grade I do want to point out that the facts and figures that I've just shared are not empty statistics. There are real families here in Fairfax County that have been affected and negatively impacted due to the lack of understanding and lack of resources for dyslexic children in our school system. We have placed real stories of real families in your packets. We must address the situation that impacts so many to help ensure that our county lives up to the reputation of being one of the best school systems in the country. Time is of the essence. There is not a moment to waste. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. The next speaker is Joanne Moore Rezek.
Hello. I'm also with Decoding Dyslexia, and I want to share the story of my oldest son. I have two sons with dyslexia. Three good things happened to our family to make this journey with dyslexia easier than most. An early diagnosis, finding the right tutor and program, and the integral fact that Jack was born with more confidence than a world leader. In kindergarten, I carved out time to participate with my child's elementary school. In Jack's 1st grade class, I was tasked with sharing reading with a hat and full of students. I would read a few pages to model reading, and then the student would follow me. It became apparent after winter break that even the most painful reader was outreading my son. Jack could not decode the word "the" even when it was on the page multiple times. Jack received help from a Title I teacher in our school, who asked me if I have ever read the book Overcoming Dyslexia. The school reading specialist sent me a packet of Easy Readers when I queried her for help. At that point, I sensed there was no time to waste, so I reached out to an old preschool teacher for a reading tutor. Here's where we hit the jackpot. We found an experienced private tutor and advocate, and with the help of our new advocate, our Title I teacher, and a somewhat bewildered 1st grade teacher, we qualified for an individual education plan. We now have four supersized binders to prove every hard-won service and accommodation. 2nd grade was the true start of special education for my son. From 2nd grade through 4th, Jack had six different special education teachers. They ranged from fabulous to fired. He helped two new special education teachers learn the Wilson Program. He gained this experience since he was privately tutored for four years. Some years, Jack would start with the general education classroom with a spelling list with words like Chesapeake. And then they would move him back to cat, as if there were no lists of words in between that he had already mastered. So general education and special education were very confusing for Jack and sometimes infuriating. For middle school, we moved away from remediation and worked hard on accommodations. He was a natural advocate for himself, even though he still had parental support. Today, Jack is a junior in high school getting ready to apply to colleges. He took the ACT with 50% extended time, and this will give him the chance to be in a college to be successful. He ranked 99th percentile in math, 97th percentile in science, and 51th percentile in reading. We share this story because school should not be this difficult for this long for anyone. Not every family has the money or the stamina for a happy ending or to make it to graduation. Not all 11th graders make it. We know what to look for in preschool, we know how to remediate dyslexia, and we know how to shape lives. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen participation. We now have a student representative matters, Mr. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much tonight, but I just want to say I am finalizing appointments. I got a list of all of some students that were interested, and I'm reaching out to them, working with them to make sure the students I appoint to the committees are really passionate and are really dedicated to where they serve. And I'm still working on school visits, and I'm hoping to have those in a couple of weeks at the OLS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. We have, we now have a couple of action items. First one being a science-based instructional materials adoption committee recommendations for high school science elective courses. And I have Mrs. McLachlan for the motion.
Where's the motion?
It's in 5.01.
I make a motion for action item 5.01, Science-Based Instruction Materials Adoption Committee with the recommendations for the high school science elective courses.
Okay, you want to read the motion? I think a motion is that the school board approved recommended instructional textbooks as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by a science-based instructional materials adoption committee. I think that's what Mrs. McLachlan meant to read.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Smith. Discussion, Mrs. McLachlan?
Yes, I'm used to being given a script if I'm going to read anything out loud, and that didn't happen tonight, so my apologies. I had asked that this action item, it was originally placed on our consent agenda, and given the concerns that this board and the school system had heard in our most recent math textbook adoption, I thought it would be very beneficial if we... math textbook adoption, I thought it would be very beneficial if we could have Dr. Garza and/or Dr. Presidio, who is with Instructional Services, to just give us a briefing, both for the board and for the public, about the actual recommendation for these science elective courses. And then, for my colleagues and myself, if there are any questions, again, through protocol, this would enable us to do that. So I'll first turn it over to Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Yes, the items before you, let me just read very quickly which textbooks there are. There are not that many of them. It's astronomy, active physics, human anatomy and physiology, oceanography, AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Environmental Science, AP Physics C. These are all elective science courses. Particularly with the AP classes, there's a requirement that the texts not be older than 10 years old. And so schools, in order for them to purchase additional textbooks, they have to be approved by the board in order for them to be able to purchase. And so this will enable our schools where they need to replace some of their elective textbooks, and some may not have to replace for many, some may have to replace over a couple of years, but this gives them the opportunity to replace them. It doesn't require the schools purchase them; it's only if they're needed. For example, I believe some of you received an inquiry regarding TJ. This is only if they offer these courses and their texts are older than the 10-year requirement for an AP class, for an example. So it would be no requirement for them to purchase them unless they're needed for them. And if there's a specific question beyond that, I'd be happy to answer that, or Dr. Presidio is also on hand.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Garza. Mrs. McLaughlin, you have...
Oh, I apologize. I should have mentioned that these are all hard textbooks, real textbooks. There are some online supplemental materials for the teachers to use should they wish to use them with their smart boards or technology in the classroom, for an example, but they're all texts that the students would, a traditional textbook.
I appreciate that summary, Dr. Garza, and you did emphasize, I think, what was most important from the experience we have with the math textbook, which is that the students will be issued a hard copy textbook, and that the online materials will be supplemental; it will be enrichment. But that, for our families who might be wondering, and because we talk about these as science electives, but really, we're talking about our most advanced science courses, our advanced placement courses. So I'm very excited about the recommendation that came forward from this committee, and I want to emphasize that it did include our teachers as part of it, and community stakeholders and administrators. So there was a lot of engagement going on in selecting these textbooks. And that Dr. Presidio did confirm that for Thomas Jefferson, where there might be some additional need or issue for the faculty and the textbook that they're looking at, that that opportunity for selecting a specific book that's approved by the college board, they will have that flexibility for those textbooks. So I think you touched on the things that I felt were most important, that the public needed to be able to hear, and it gave us a chance, I think, as a system, to be able to speak positively about what this process was, and that going forward, I hope it will be a smooth one for our families. And I just also wanted to make sure that if any of my colleagues had wanted to be able to ask questions, as I stated earlier, if it's on a consent agenda, there is no discussion; there is no questions to be asked, and we don't get a chance to present this information that I think is important to many of our families to know. So, thank you. I appreciate this.
Okay, Mrs. Smith, you want to speak on your second? If not, Mrs. Schur, did you want to speak?
And there was a... So I understand why Mrs. McLaughlin brought this up, and I did have some email traffic conversation with Dr. Presidio and you, Dr. Garza. And two of the things that I think are of the concern are, is this prescriptive? And I think that you answered it in that it is permissive in nature. So it is not prescriptive in that if there are students that excel at the highest end, if there is another textbook that is deemed appropriate, do they have access to that textbook? Is kind of the first question. And I think that you answered that. I don't know if you have anything else to say on that one.
In any course, if these texts are not appropriate, then we would have to provide a different resource for them. But these are the ones that we are aware that we have some that are getting out of date and are no longer, we're getting to the point where they're no longer in compliance with the college board, for an example. But if there's a need for more advanced materials, for courses where, you know, these texts would not be appropriate, most definitely, we would work toward that end.
Okay, so that's...
So it's not required that they purchase these, only if they need to.
Okay, so that it's permissive in nature was what a lot of us had received feedback from constituents and concern about, and certainly, of course, with TJ, but even the upper-level classes, you know, elsewhere in the county. And then, the affirmation that these are, in fact, hard copy textbooks, because really what that brings, you know, back into the dialogue, is the discussion, again, that we had last year on the prevalence and the access of students who need them, and frankly, parents. And this is probably, I said earlier, that dyslexia is one of the most commonly referred items when I talk out in the community. The access to hard textbooks is right up there, and not just from parents, but from students as well. And so as we go forward in this identification process for textbooks, that it is a turnkey, you know, solution from the identification, not only in the material that will ultimately we will acquire in hard copy and the license numbers, the amount of licenses that we get, but it does raise the issue of, are we getting enough textbooks when we do these acquisitions and these approvals to meet the needs of our student base? So that's, you know, those two issues were really key, that you all needed to hear from us, as opposed to being on a consent agenda.
If I might respond to that, we agree with you about the need to make sure that we're replenishing and have sufficient number of access in terms of inventory at the campus level. In the past, we've provided resources through the campus budgets to purchase textbooks, but you remember in some of our budget talks, we feel like we need to build in money that over time, we can replenish books and keep them up-to-date textbooks. So these, though, are if they're offering those courses and they have the need for them. But long-term, which is kind of part of what you were commenting on, we feel like we need to build in a sustainable budget and a sustainable way of making sure that we have, you know, the most up-to-date and their sufficient number.
Okay, I have Mr. Terrana Kofax, to be followed by Ms. Evans and Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe my question was answered because both of my colleagues who spoke prior to me, because my question came also from the TJ community, asking, you know, can, I believe in the past, they were allowed to, you know, choose books of deeper rigor for some of their advanced students, and you've answered that sufficiently, and I've talked to Dr. Presidio, and now you've stated that publicly, so I just wanted that to be stated. Thank you so much.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Garza, for clarifying all those important issues. I did have one more question, which came to me this afternoon from a constituent, saying that the AP textbooks as new tests are being rolled out. Are these new textbooks aligning with the new texts? Was that considered as part of the consideration of these textbooks?
You know, the college board controls their curriculum quite well, and so anytime there are a text, that's why they have a requirement to remain in compliance with college board, you have to change your text every 10 years. And so the answer is yes, as long as we comply with their requirements.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for answering the questions of my colleagues, and some of mine were similar to that. One thing that I don't see in here is a price tag. And do we know how much we're paying for these, even just an approximation?
Well, with your approval, we'll be in a position to negotiate. So the numbers that I have right now are somewhat inflated, we believe. However, if a campus needed to replace all of them, all of the elective books at one time, it would cost about $52,000 for a campus, a high school campus. That's unlikely that that would happen, that they would need to do that. Most of our principals, as, you know, we have one of our principals on our leadership team, indicated that they plan for this, and they'll determine how many books, or what books they're going to replenish on rotating years. So most of our high school principals have a plan for that, and so they're accustomed to dealing with it. But textbooks are very expensive, and they just are, particularly when you're, you know, you're looking at college-level text, and these advanced science, they're not inexpensive. I will tell you that some of them range on the high end, and again, this is without negotiation, around $150, low end to about $90. So they get very expensive.
Wow, wow. Again, that's something that's been planned for and is in our approved budget, so this is not a situation where somebody's coming up with a request that's coming out of the clear blue and hasn't been approved or anything like that, just to set the record straight. That has happened.
No, in fact, our principals, there were quite a number of folks involved in the process, you know, as you mentioned, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Presidio and his team did a really good job of involving stakeholders. There are some that are quite anxious to have this approved so they can replenish some of the books that they need.
I will just make an observation. It's a little bit ironic that we're talking about textbooks, given the Jason Project presentation just a few minutes ago. And there was some language in the material that we were given that alludes to some supplemental online materials. So is that basically saying that it isn't just kids sitting there looking at textbooks, but in fact, most of our advanced classes in particular do have other kinds of materials that are used, such as videos and hands-on type thing?
It's pretty rare today to find a text that does not come with some supplemental online materials to enhance the learning. Most teachers across the United States have smart boards, and they're very inclined to want to have texts that have those kinds of materials available to them. So yes, all of these come with online supplemental materials.
Okay, and last question is just whenever we say "online," I start to cringe a little bit.
I know.
But will we make sure that everyone who has a need for access is actually given access?
And keep in mind, those are primarily for the teacher to use in the classroom. When I said "teacher supplemental materials," it's not that if students don't have access to those, that they're limited in information they have available to them. Those are primarily for the teachers and their use in the classroom.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans, to be followed by Mrs. Reed. Where is Mr. Chairman tonight? Forgot to check off. Meant to say, Mrs. Schurz.
Apparently, whatever you had to say wasn't very interesting, because you missed the last 10 minutes. I just, my colleague, Ms. Reed, just prompted a question that I think had come up, again, previous when we had talked about sufficient number of texts. When we negotiate the cost, is it possible for us to negotiate a price for parents who feel that they want to buy an extra copy at home? So that we, because that's, I mean, here's these parents that were always struggling, and then they get stuck paying retail if they decide that they want an extra copy at home. And believe me, there are plenty of parents who do. So I'm wondering if we couldn't negotiate, not only on behalf of ourselves, but also on behalf of, you know, like a set price that if parents wanted to, go out and access. It's just a thought, but let's be wise fiscally, not only with our own dollars, but with the family's dollars.
We have a process, you know, I'm sure some of you experienced this before, where your child has lost a textbook, where they have to replace it. So you would think that we'd be charging the parents the cost of what it cost us. So I can't imagine that we could not sell a textbook to a parent for our cost on that. I don't know.
Yes, we'll look into and try to build that into the contract.
Great. I think that was getting to yes.
Okay, with that, let me call for the vote on the motion, which is that the school board approved recommended instructional textbooks as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by the Science Basil Instructional Materials Adoption Committee. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous; the motion passes. The next order of business is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the division superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion comes from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with a serious crime that occurred in the community and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Velkop. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Stork, Velkop, Reed, Hines, Moon, Terrana Kofax, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss, those opposing, abstaining, Schurz, and McLaughlin, the motion passes. The second motion comes from Mrs. Smith.
I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Velkop, and those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Stork, Velkop, Reed, Hines, Moon, Terrana Kofax, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss, those opposing and abstaining, McLaughlin and Schurz, the motion passes. We now have a consent agenda as the next order of business. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Roble's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through a board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of September 26, 2013, regular school board meeting. 6.02, adopt a resolution to opt-out of the Virginia Local Disability Program administered by the Virginia Retirement System. 6.03, award a contract for Westgate Elementary School renovation project to J.C. Greenberg Company Incorporated in the amount of $15,060,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, award a contract for automatic temperature control system replacement at Timberland Elementary School to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, Engineer Services, Inc., in the amount of $319,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, appoint individuals to servant committees as in the detailed agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have a new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, adopt the 2014 Fairfax County School Board legislative program as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, adopt the newly devised 2013 Fairfax County purchasing resolution previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. Next, we have Superintendent Meadows and Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to announce that we've received new graduation rates from the Virginia Education Virginia Education Department of Education, and they show that 92% of FCPS students from the class of 2013 graduated on time, a rate that exceeds the state average of 89%, and increased over the previous year. We also received word on our one-time graduation rates. They're based upon four years of student-level data that take into account student mobility and many other demographic issues. A total of 8,405 FCPS students, or 61.8%, obtained an Advanced Studies diploma in 2013, and that's compared to the state average of 49.7%. Fairfax County Public Schools, 61.8%, the state average, 49.7. So, I just want to congratulate all of our folks at the campus level who work with our students, our campus leaders, our teachers, our counselors, social workers, I go on and on and on. So many people contribute to that and we're very proud. Also want to mention that our education summit on September the 28th was a resounding success. We had almost 700 educators, parents, and community members out at Edison High School to hear. We had wonderful breakout sessions from a lot of our great folks in Fairfax County public schools. So, I want to commend the Board for your leadership in this effort, particularly Vice Chair of then, she was Vice Chair of, Vice Chair of the Board, but she was also Chair of the Public Engagement Committee at the time. Mrs. Darianet Kovacs did a lot of great work on that. Also want to thank Barbara Hunter and her entire department for their great work, and we have to say thanks to so many of the other leaders throughout our organization who contributed to that planning. I thought it really, I think we put a very positive foot forward on that effort. And finally, I want to publicly thank Ann Murphy. Ann, is it 31 or 32 years practicing law?
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there. I will not be at our next board meeting. At our next board meeting, I believe we're going to be acknowledging and recognizing Ann for her contributions. She's one of the best school attorneys I've ever had the privilege to work with. I'm sad that she's not going to be here with us very much longer because I would have very much enjoyed working with her for many, many years. But I won't be here at the last meeting because our daughter's getting married on October the 26th. But I wanted to publicly acknowledge her service, and it's been a delight to get to know her and work with her. So, thank you, Ann.
I think Ms. Murphy might have practiced the law a little longer than 31 years, though. Since 1977, am I right? Okay. By the way, Dr. Garza, I need to, I need to thank the keynote speaker who was at the Education Summit. Very good, very good speech, Dr. Garza. With that, we will go to the reports. We have two reports, one from Mrs. Smith and the other from Mrs. Kovacs.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. The Infrastructure Financing Committee, that's the joint committee with members of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, met on October 2nd, and we had a presentation about county ADA requirements, talked, had a summary of county requirements for their facilities issues, county capital project cost savings measures, talked about the school's infrastructure maintenance requirements. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 6 at 3:00. All of this information is on our website, and there's also a website on the county page with the detailed reports if you'd like to read them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kovacs.
Thank you. Earlier this evening at our forum, we had one topic, and we had a robust discussion talking about creating an internationalization working group. And the Board unanimously, I believe, agreed that this group would start, and some of the topics that it would discuss, but not be limited to, expanding world language programs to all school, developing study abroad opportunities, and engaging with the Fairfax DC international and diplomatic communities, and perhaps creating international school and district partnerships. So, there were many more ideas discussed, and the plan was to come forward with more ideas in the spring, but we may revisit it prior to that time to refine the scope a little bit more.
Thank you. Now, the next order of business is Board Matters. We'll start with Ms. Ash.
No additional business at this time.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Just a couple of things to mention. One is that we have a foundation that the Board has supported for a long time, and we had a meeting earlier today that at least wanted to apprise people of, that there were a number of steps that were initiated to essentially reorganize the committee, to really to refocus the foundation, that I think were very positive. And I'm pleased to say that the Board will continue to have a representative on that foundation, along with Dr. Garza and a leader of the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce. And we really kind of, I think, further focused the foundation on what we really started, what we really created it, and this Board was very involved with this creation, created it to perform, which is to raise money to support our schools and our operations and to try to kind of reinvigorate that part of what we're doing. So, I wanted to share that with you and kind of recognize that we, I think, much as we've done with the education summit and many other things that this Board has initiated, the special education summit is another example of that, where we start something off, and maybe it starts off a little slowly, but we pick up steam as we go along. And I think clearly the foundation is at that point in its development as well. And we'll be coming back to you with at least some reports about what we hope to work on. I know Dr. Garza is particularly involved with that, and she may even have some comments on what I'm mentioning. But it's especially important to us because the foundation gives us flexibility in a lot of areas that we wouldn't have, number one. Number two, it draws in the business and corporate community to really everything that we do, and they are an essential partner for us in many, many ways. And I see Dr. Garza maybe would want to comment on it. Please do. I just wanted to share that with the Board.
Yes, I'm very excited about the future of our foundation. When we look at other comparable divisions, they have very vibrant staffs that help run and really drive that work and develop wonderful and very strategic partnerships with business and industry. But I have to compliment, so I think it's our day, we're starting to really see, I'm seeing some momentum around that. I want to compliment the Fairfax Chamber for their support. While it was kind of fledgling, they were helping moving it, to move it along, and I think we're really going to be able, be in position to build upon their work and support and leadership, and they'll continue to have a major role in the work. But we have visions of grandeur as it relates to what can be accomplished to support our schools and support great work all throughout our division with the opportunity for business and industry and other great community partners to engage with us. I'm so glad you brought it up, Mr. Stork, so thank you.
And I just, we have a lot more potential there, and I think, Dr. Garza, even maybe to do a presentation, I know we have some, our own matching program, that's a new software program that I love for the Board to see, and maybe it's an opportunity for us to kind of bring those two things together, to see really what roles, really the essential role Board members have in bringing community members and helping them be part of our growth and development of the foundation. So, two more things I want to mention. We had our annual Mount Vernon Town Hall meeting last Thursday, the 3rd, and Dr. Garza was there. Thank you very much. And we also had wonderful representation from Dr. Ivy from Cluster 5 and several school members. Appreciate Ryan being there and Sandy being there as well. Good turnout, great questions, and again, very wonderful opportunity really for the community to question us about what we're doing and how we're doing it. So, it was a wonderful meeting. We have our second Mount Vernon Town Hall meeting. We do one in kind of the southern part of the county to capture the schools in Cluster 5, and then we have one in the more northern part to capture the schools in Cluster 4. That's on the 15th, which is this coming Tuesday. Dr. Garza, again, has gracefully agreed to be there, and we will have, I'm sure, an excellent turnout. It usually is a very active group of citizens that are part of that conversation, and anybody in the community, of course, is welcome to come. Again, 7:00 at Whitman Middle School on Tuesday, October 15th. So, again, please come. Thank you.
Mr. Velkopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to talk about two things. So, first of all, a week ago Sunday, I ran into Ron Fitzsimmons at an event, and I learned about an organization called Alice's Kids, and they do really neat stuff. Kid loses their glasses, they need replacement to their glasses, or a new pair of shoes, stuff where the, stuff where the wider social safety net doesn't really apply, and it's an opportunity for us to step in, that organization steps in, helps those kids out. I was really impressed by what they were doing, and I just, I didn't know anything about it, and I just wanted to let everybody know. And again, that's Alice's Kids. I'd also just like to take a little time here to remind everybody what's going on with the budget. I want to thank Dr. Garza and Mrs. Quinn and Mrs. Michael. They have met with each Board member. We've all had an opportunity now to have discussions about the choices that we face, and they're going to be now meeting with each of the members of the Board of Supervisors. So, each supervisor is going to have an opportunity to have a conversation about the difficulties that we're facing, and for us to understand the difficulties that they're facing as well. I do want to remind us, we are facing a deficit of $140 million, and let's remember where that comes from. There's $25 million increase in membership. There's a $56.4 million increase in expenses that come from the combination of increased funding that has to go to the VRS and to the health benefits of our employees. So, our expenses are going up by $81.4 million, and those are unavoidable expenses. We also are losing, we estimate, about $21 million from the change in the LCI, and we also have, compared to a year ago, $37.6 million less than we had a year ago, because you'll recall that we had put away some money for the VRS and we had a larger carryover. So, that's where the $140 million comes from that we're going to have to come up with. So, on October the 21st, I just want you to all be prepared. That's our next full-day work session, and Dr. Garza and her team are going to be presenting a number of the options that are available to us and how we're going to meet these challenges. And it's going to be a meeting where a lot of ideas are put on the table, and we will have an opportunity to kind of react to what the choices are, and it will be a good chance for us to communicate to the community and begin educating the community on how difficult the situation is and that this is a really serious budget crisis. So, thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. This week, I had the pleasure of participating in International Walk to School Day. I went to Timberlane Elementary School and walked with a number of students and families. I wanted to thank Adam and Jean Pacino for organizing the event with the help of Jeff Anderson from Safe Routes to School. Ms. Harris and Ms. Cook, really, it was a community and school event. It was very exciting, and it brought me back to the days just a few years ago when I was a walker to my elementary school. There was a swag bag that everybody received with things like reflectors and a cliff bar and little puzzles and things, and so it was the first day in Yola, and we'll be excited to participate again next year. And then I went back that night to the Timberlane PTA meeting, and it was very well attended, and I have to say that one of the top issues was the budget. People are starting to hear what we're saying, and they're very concerned. They want to know how they can help. I heard a similar theme today in the Cluster 2 Parent Advisory Committee meeting that I attended, and many of the PTA presidents from Cluster 2 were there. We had a number of topics, but again, we spent most of the time talking about the budget. They very much appreciated the document that was put together and said that was excellent, and they've now asked for how they can get involved and what information can they use to send out to their families. So, if we can boil that down, that's probably something that would be helpful. I also wanted to remind schools out there that National Make a Difference Day is coming up, October 26th, and Providence District, every year, our schools write letters to soldiers, and we have been collecting them. One school sent over 500 letters just themselves. It's a great exercise for the kids, and I tell you, I go every year and we put the packages together at James Lee Community Center, and there's all kinds of goodies in there, toiletries, and each one gets a personal note from a student. I tell you, it just brings you to tears, you know, because they're just so honest and sincere and just so thankful, and it's just, it's just really a special day. And last but not least, also on October 26th is the AAP Parent Conference at West Springfield High School. I'm the AAP liaison this year, and so I wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. Information is on the website. There'll be over 30 breakout sessions. So, for those of you who are interested, not just AAP parents, but all, parents of all students who are interested in the range of academic services that we offer. Thank you.
Continue on.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to give a quick shout-out to school counselors at Madison High School and South Lakes High School. I've been meeting with them this week because as members of the American School Counselor Association, they are, they are participating in a national certification called RAMP, and it's where they, you know, go the extra mile to support our students in research-based practices. This is an extra gift to our students from people who are already working very hard, so I'm very grateful to all they do for our students. Also, just one other thing, I wanted to make sure everybody knows that Dr. Karen Garza will be in Hunter Mill on October 28th, Monday at 7:00 at Sunrise Valley Elementary School. I keep saying that everywhere I go, but I want to get a lot of people there. So, thank you so much for coming out to the neighborhood.
Mrs. McLachlan.
I just want to first begin by thanking our citizen speakers tonight, in particular, the Advocates for Decoding Dyslexia of Virginia. Having been a parent advocate, I know the tireless and passionate work that you are doing to bring very important information to our public officials, to our school system, to our state legislators. It's invaluable to helping us to continue as a school system and as a society to move forward and honor our commitments to helping children being successful, each and every child. So, I really want to applaud all of you for your dedication because the work you're doing not only helps your own children, but as you pointed out this evening, 15 to 20% of children in our school system, with 180,000-plus kids in our school system, that's many lives. And so, thank you for what you're doing for all of those children and for us as a community. And I do hope that our families will take advantage of the workshop that will be going on later this month to help our families better understand all the support and resources that we have here in Fairfax. I also want to give a special appreciation to Dr. Garza and to Dr. Dockery and her team. I understand that they met with the Decoding Dyslexia parents, and it is so reassuring to me as a School Board member that this is a parent group that has been trying to help us move forward with best practices, and the time you took to meet with them, I know, meant a lot to them, and I want to thank you for honoring what they can bring to us as a school system. So, I appreciate that and look forward to supporting all of the work that you're doing. The second thing is, I have been hearing from my back-to-school-night visits and also from my Braddock District newsletter that just went out tonight at 6:00 PM, that online textbooks are still presenting a challenge for our families. And so, for anyone who's listening tonight, I want to share with you confirmation that I have been getting from our school system, that if your children need a hard copy textbook, please do speak with the administrators in your building, and if there is some confusion about providing the textbooks, the hard copies to your children, please do reach out to your Cluster Superintendents and to any of us here on the School Board so that we can help you, because it's very important that we, again, assist you and your children in being successful. And I know that the school system wants that to happen, so I don't want people going out feeling like they have to buy these costly textbooks on their own. I also just wanted to quickly congratulate, if I hadn't publicly before, our own Will Ash as a National Merit semifinalist, along with the other 220 students here in Fairfax County who earned that designation, over 1.5 million. Over 1.5 million students in the United States took the PSAT. 16,000 were honored as national semifinalists. And I will also give a special shout-out to one of my Braddock high schools. Woodson High School had 11 students this year recognized as national merit semifinalists, following only closely behind to Langley with 13 and Oakton at 15. So just congratulations to all those students for their hard work. And I hope it presents them with opportunities as both Will and my son, who's a senior, grapple with the college admissions process this fall and winter. Hang in there. I know it's, it'll all come out good in the end. And then finally, I just want to thank many of my Braddock District elementary principals. I have been scheduling meetings to visit with them, learn about how best we can support the elementary school delivery of instruction. And so I've already met with five of them and greatly appreciate the insights they've given and look forward to meeting with the rest of my elementary school principals this fall. The wealth of information they're giving me, I hope, allows me to support them and to support Dr. Garza and his administration. And with that, everyone, please watch the scores tomorrow night between Lake Braddock and Woodson football. It could be a very difficult game. As some of you know, I have two boys on the team, and we're just hoping for no injuries.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. Thank you again to all those who participated in the education summit. It really was very successful. And Dr. Garza, we certainly enjoyed your speech as well. And Barbara Hunter and your crew did a great job. Everybody else, and Ms. Darna Kofax, it was well done. I also want to congratulate McLean Project for the Arts. We had our large art fest last weekend. Many, many of our children were displaying their art as a part of the project. And again, the McLean Project for the Arts raises money and invites many of our Title I schoolchildren to be transported and come to our gallery for special, special art activities. And this is, we do not provide the funding for it. McLean Project for the Arts goes out and gets the funding and brings the children in. We recognized them last year as a special partner to the school system. So again, I congratulate McLean Project for the Arts. Walking, biking to school, I was at Spring Hill, and we had 279 walkers and 55 bikers and scooters as well. So we had a wonderful time. It's also out in a number of my schools in Herndon. And as we are all very concerned about making sure that our children have the most nutritious food possible that we serve in our schools, I have many children who go home hungry on the weekend. And I want to thank the churches and community groups who put together nutritious food packages for many of my children at Hutchison and at Herndon Elementary. I did want to make sure, wanted to see what the kids were going home with. So I'm very grateful to the community that does that. So we have to remember, not only is it good food, but enough food for many of our children and families. So thank you to those wonderful community folks who are making sure that my children are fed on the weekend. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I also was very pleased to participate in International Walk to School Day at North Springfield Elementary. And I want to thank Principal Chad McRae and Suzanne Metz for the warm welcome and for organizing the event. I did not count the children, but there was a huge herd that was, that were walking and skipping down the street with signs. And it was quite delightful, and it was a lovely day. And I hope that all of us then use this as an example to do this more often, to walk to school. I also wanted to mention that I went to the Park Authority Board meeting as the liaison from the school board to the Park Authority Board. And again, I received a warm welcome there. I will be sending everyone just a very brief summary of what the discussion there was about very soon. On October 16th, I will be at the Stewart High School PTSA. And I hope everyone at Stewart High School will come out for that PTSA meeting. I look forward to talking with you about anything that you have on your mind. And Glasgow Middle School, at Glasgow Middle School on October 19th, Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be an electronics recycling event. So if you have electronics to recycle, please come out there to Glasgow Middle School on Saturday, October 19th. And last but not least, I'm very pleased that Dr. Garza has started the listening tours. And we are going to have her at Stewart High School Little Theater on November 6th at 7:00 p.m. And I hope everybody in Mason District will come out and chat with Dr. Garza. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Shree.
My listening tour is not till much, much later, so I'm not going to give you the date because it's a long time away. A few things, no, it's more than a few things, unfortunately. Fairview Elementary, I had the pleasure of going out with Principal Mayor and Assistant Principal Bujali. And I just want to compliment them on the implementation of their PBIS system. I didn't get a purple ticket, but I hope all the parents of Fairview students are getting a lot of purple tickets. What a tremendous program. And clearly, the takeaway was such a positive environment. So it's a new year at Fairview, and I think that the parents are very much enjoying it. I very much appreciated the presentation. The second is, I mentioned earlier, my ACSD meeting last night. And I want to in particular highlight David Culver, who is a reporter with NBC. This is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And he did a terrific program. You can Google, use the Google. But the video that he did of our Chantilly students, our special education students, leaving the school a couple times a week and going into the community and getting work experience for ultimate transition was absolutely terrific. And what a great way to highlight not only the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, but also the work that we're doing in our schools. Centerville High School has quite a big game this weekend, tomorrow night against Westfield. And that's going to be a big one. So I hope everybody's very well behaved, has a great time. I hope the weather turns out well for you. I missed, unfortunately, Robinson's homecoming game last weekend. I was in, at college, I was doing college family weekend. But congratulations to the Rams for winning their homecoming game. I do try to make my way around the football season to all the schools. And I enjoyed going to the West Springfield-Centerville game. It made for an interesting evening. I brought one of my boys dressed in Wildcat colors and one dressed in Spartan colors, and I came in black. So that was like the most Switzerland I could get in supporting all of, all of my schools and all of my principals and athletic directors. On October 26th, there is the Organization Walk for Autism Virginia. Very important organization that does a lot of work with the Students with Disabilities Committee and providing support and resources and materials to parents who have children on the autism spectrum. If you could, it's October 26th, it's actually happening in Prince William County. But the website for the information is walkforautismva.org. Please go and support that if you have the opportunity. I do want to thank Mr. Plattenberg, who, it's early, so he's, he doesn't have too bad of a commute. We continue to have transportation challenges, and transportation has been so responsive in helping with bus routes in the Fairfax Station-Clifton area. And I would just really appreciate his high touch and responsiveness in that regard so that we should see a lot of improvement, hopefully, for parents and students soon. And... That's it.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. As you all heard, we will be adopting our legislative program at our next meeting. So please be sure to get any potential amendments to Michael and Pam so that they can help you finesse the language. I do know that we already have two, we already have two passed forward, one from Ms. Evans on FOIA and one from Mr. Velkoff on equal rights for women. So I do look forward to potentially one from Ms. Darna Kofax and potentially one from Ms. McLaughlin. So please get those in. Secondly, I do want to thank my colleagues for approving my form item tonight on moving forward with our internationalization working group. And I do want to thank, again, Dr. Persidio for working with me and helping to shepherd this movement forward. As you know, this is an issue that's very close to my heart. And I'm glad that even in times of financial difficulty, we don't lose sight of our student achievement goals. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Stork on a great start to our first annual listening tour. I look forward to being at all other eight stops throughout the county. So just remember, one of our PEC recommendations from last year was that all board members at least try to make it to some of these. And I was glad that Ms. Evans was able to come out to that one as well. Finally, and most importantly, we did have a special day this past Tuesday. It was the birthday of our boss, Pam Goddard. So happy birthday, Pam. I hear she has at least 10, 10 more years in her, Ms. Clerk, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
Ms. Darna Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Thank you all for the compliments about the education summit. It was certainly not me alone, it was the PEC committee last year as well as staff. And I believe the near, the highest attendance numbers were due to our hot-ticket draw of Dr. Garza as our keynote speaker. So thank you all. It was, it was quite an effort, and it paid off. And it was very exciting to have 10 breakout sessions. Mr. Stork, as you said, you wish, you know, the idea that you instituted, and it's grown. And I'm happy to be part of helping that as well. But thank you for the original idea very much. My back-to-school nights, I believe, are done in Lee. So thanks to all of you who came out. And please, as my message was always, continue your involvement with your child's education. The next opportunity you'll have, or if you're in elementary school, you'll have your parent teacher conferences coming up shortly. And if you are in middle or high school, we'll, you'll have the touching basis opportunities. So please continue to come out and do that. I do want to compliment Mr. Velkoff, Dr. Garza, Ms. Quinn and her staff, and many other leadership team staffs who are putting out, are getting out this excellent early start on the budget. It's very, very important. You're putting it out in plain language, you're putting it out there, telling the story, why it's happening. And that makes it very much easier for all of us in all of our districts when we have questions about that. So thank you so much, really appreciate that. Homecoming weeks are starting, so congratulations to all those. I know Lee is this week, and I believe Mount Vernon High School tomorrow morning. The anchor, Tony Perkins, from local Fox 5 morning news show, is a graduate of Mount Vernon High School. So he will be doing tomorrow morning. So if you watch news when you get up, turn on Channel 5 tomorrow to see our own Mount Vernon High School showcase there and their homecoming activities will be showcased. And finally, I will be honored tomorrow to be traveling down to Richmond. I will be the guest of Melissa Porforio, who has advanced. She was the Region Four winner now. She competed against 20 other school districts. If you recall, Melissa was our Teacher of the Year last year. She is a first-grade teacher at Crestwood Elementary. And tomorrow, she will be in competition, if you will, but she will be honored. And they will be announcing the Virginia Teacher of the Year, and she is in the running for that. So I look forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Darna Kofax. When you see Ms. Porforio tomorrow night, could you convey my congratulations once again, and also regrets that I will be unable to join her because I am committed to be at Centerville High School watching the biggest football game between Centerville and Westfield. About a week ago, I was at Westfield High School. Westfield crushing Stonebridge. I loved it. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, we will, we will do debriefing? We'll do debriefing?